Calling this meeting to order for the school district of the city of Dearborn. It's January 13th, it's a Monday, January 13, 2025. Roll call, please.
Trustee Al-Jahmi.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Here.
Trustee Watts.
Here.
Trustee Zaher, here. President Mosup.
Here. Next item, please.
The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag to be presented by Mr. David Higgins, the principal of William Ford Elementary, and students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. President Mosup, trustees, congratulations, Trustees Zahar and Trustee Al-Jahmi, Dr. Maleko. I'm joined by five of my really good friends. Of course, Ms. Najm, Ms. Nasri Najm, our assistant principal. We have Sofia Jalala, Adam Kadua, and we have Miriam and Mohammed Ali Zain. They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Amazing job! Sofia. Adam. Miriam. Thank you. Hamad. Thank you so much. Thank you. Another round. Before we start the Agenda Item Superintendent update, I'd like to address everyone. Obviously, for those who are following, we have changed seats. Prior to this meeting, we had our organizational meeting and elected new officers. So I'd like to thank my colleagues for entrusting me in the role of president. I'd like to also congratulate Trustee Watts for serving as vice president, as well as Trustees Zahar. Congratulations for nomination and being elected to serve as secretary, and Trustee D'Ambrosio to serve as treasurer. Prior to that agenda item, I'd like to invite Trustees Zahar and Trustee Al-Jahmi to make a few remarks after their sworn in.
First of all, I really want to thank all those that attended. I really appreciate your support. A lot of them are my campaign team, and without you, I wouldn't have been sitting at this seat. So I do appreciate it. But I also want to thank the Dearborn community for entrusting me to be able to sit at this seat, and I promise I will do the best I can to make sure that our kids get what they need from an educational standpoint, from a safety standpoint, from different things. My job here is to make sure I live up to your expectation. You came out and you voted for me, and now I am... You know, my job is to make sure I don't lay you down, and I will make sure to do everything I can. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to thank everyone who put their support in me. I look forward to making sure that we're tackling the issues in our school and make sure that outcomes are what they need to be, so that our students are getting the most they can from our schools, so that we get the most from them when they move on. I want to thank my niece and nephew for coming here today and helping me actually do this thing. And for everyone who is out here, who was part of our campaign, thank you, and I promise to make you all proud. I'd also like to use this opportunity for another message and announcement. I'd like to ask, if I could, the members of the Pirelli family who are here with us to stand up in the back, Jim and Denise, if you could please stand up. As a lot of you might know, we lost somebody very important to the Dearborn Schools community. Cindy Pirelli was a fixture in our schools for decades. She was an executive assistant to presidents of the college, Andy Mazzara and Gail Me, and she was someone who dedicated her professional life to helping our students and making sure they had everything they needed. Unfortunately, tragically, a couple months ago, we lost Cindy. And I can say as someone who knew her that I was just happy and lucky to be someone who did know her. She's someone who always put a smile on everyone's face. She had that dry humor that just always made people feel included and like she cared. And she not only worked in the schools for decades, but then even wanted to be involved. She ran for Dearborn School Board, and just like other members of her family, stayed committed to this community and stayed here until her very last days. And so I think what we can say mostly about her is that we were lucky to have her with us. And in Arabic, we say "Allah irhamhaw isabber alha," which means "May God have mercy on her soul and give patience to her family." And most importantly, I think we can say about her, more than anything else, is that she was a good person who cared about her community and cared about the people who were around her. And so to her family, we say "Thank you for sharing her with us," and "Thank you so much for being here with us tonight."
Thank you, Trustees Zahar and Trustee Al-Jahmi. I'd love to also recognize Mayor Abdullah Hamud, who is in attendance. Thank you so much for supporting our school district, and also Representative Farhat. I've saw him somewhere in the background, maybe he has left, but we'd like to also thank him for his support. Next agenda item, please.
The next agenda item is the Superintendent's Update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with a moment of silence. You know, sorry for the loss of Ms. Pirelli, and I think we can conclude her in this moment of silence, along with, we heard the sad news over the break of former Mayor O'Reilly, who passed away. Mayor O'Reilly was very supportive of the school district, being involved in the PTI. I know Deval, I know when I was principal, he had resided across the street, and then he was heavily, heavily involved in the foundation, along with other issues and partnerships that he created with the school district. So if we could take a moment of silence, I appreciate that for both of them. Thank you. I'm going to move along, Mr. President, if that's okay.
Sure.
So the next I have under Agenda Items is retirements. I'm going to congratulate and thank Stephanie El-Sala, over 11 years of experience, and Constance Henry, 10 years of service. If we could express our appreciation and thank you for the years of service. Congratulations. The next I have, because there is an agenda item tied to this, I'm going to call it Mr. Wall and Mr. Mustenin. As we look at a potential bond moving forward, there's still a lot of work to do, but they're going to provide an update and some information to the board.
Well, good evening, and thank you all for giving us a moment. Congratulations, Trustee Mosup, and congratulations to our two new board members as well. We're just, Tom, Mr. Wall and I are here just to kind of give a brief overall as we start this discussion back again. There are a couple of agenda items that are tied to our discussions moving forward and our work moving forward, and we just thought it would be a good idea to kind of provide a little bit of quick background to bring everybody back up to speed. Once again, obviously, we're talking about infrastructure and facility needs. We want to remind everybody about the age of our buildings and where they are, you know, as far as average age goes as well. And then I just think it's important to provide that timeline and where this all began, because, you know, we all have that COVID gap, right? Everybody says, "Oh, that happened like two years ago," but really, it was like five, six years ago, because we're in 2025, and COVID kind of had that way of putting that gap in all of our lives. So just to kind of put everything back in perspective and give a timeline, we, you know, this all began, you know, we started right after the 2019 bond proposal with a lot of election debriefing. We had some, brought in interviewed outside consultants for some community engagement, and we were starting that process all over again when COVID hit, and then that kind of slowed everything down a little bit. We were able to pick back up. We, if you recall, we had a citizens committee, they were called the VIP Committee, and that committee did a lot of work in researching our facility and infrastructure needs. They brought some recommendations to this board. The board then had requested some additional feedback. We had some additional town hall meetings in 2022, and I think the biggest recommendation that came out of there was that we brought on a third-party company to do a long-range, 30-year kind of facilities needs assessment of our building, and the board gave us the okay to do that. That was Fielding International came on board. They began their work in fall of 2022 and then presented to the board in May of 2023. At that time, we also had to consider our operational millage renewal. This was a renewal that happens every 10 years. It started in 1994. It's tied directly to our funding that we get from the state of Michigan. And so we put our facility and infrastructure discussion on hold, just so that we could focus efforts on that operational millage approval, and we want to thank our voters who approved that in February of 2024 with a 70% approval rating. In September of this year, or last year, we once again had to say, "Okay, let's get this going again. Let's bring this conversation back on facility and infrastructure." And we are here tonight. That's kind of where we are. You can see the calendar timeline of events, and there are two companies that are on the agenda for this evening, one to assist in community engagement, another to help us assess the historical aspects of our buildings. I think that in all of this work that we have done over these past five years, now going on six years, there are some things that came forward in all of our community meetings, whether it was that original group in 2019 or in the work with Fielding International. And that, and this is just some highlights of some of that work, some of those needs that came out of those meetings. This isn't stuff that the district is saying. These are directly from all of the community engagement sessions that occurred, from our VIP Committee, from our town hall meetings, from the work that Fielding International did, engaging the stakeholders of our community. And you can see there, there are some things that just kind of stand out that we know we need to address, some things that are very important to this community. A few other takeaways that came out of both the work of both of these groups. Again, this is directly from our community. This is not what the administration is saying. This is what our community was telling us during those meetings. We've compiled a lot of this information on the First Bell, which is our newsletter website, which you can access directly from DearbornSchools.org. If you go to the First Bell, there's a facilities tab up at the top, and if you click on that tab, it will take you to all this information. And you can review for yourself all of that work that's been done, the presentations that were submitted to the board, the reports that were given by Fielding, and their analysis of our buildings, and you can take a look at all of that, and so that we can all help, help everybody kind of get back into this mode and get up to speed on where we are with this very, very important discussion. The final thing that we want to share is this. So I'll use this analogy. If I'm getting together with three of my friends, and I know that one of them has had Italian food for the last five days, and the other is on a diet because it's the new year, and another is saying that they do not like to eat meat, they're vegetarians. And I just come out and I tell them, "Hey, where do you guys want to go for dinner?" We're going to get a lot of different answers. We're going to get a lot of hemming and hawing. We're going to get a lot of different kinds of responses on a blank slate. But as a good host, what I might do is I might say, "Hey, I know that you've had Italian the last five days, so let's not eat Italian. And I know that you're trying to watch your weight because you're on a New Year's resolution diet, and I know you're a vegetarian. So I tell you what, there are these three restaurants that I think fall in line here. There's a Mexican restaurant that fits all of these bills. How about Mexican?" So I can help with that process based upon what I already know. And I'm not telling them that we're going to go eat Mexican. I'm helping to steer the conversation. And they then may respond and provide me with further feedback that helps even more. I think that's where we are with our discussion on facilities and infrastructure, and I don't mean to trivia, make it trivial, or to make lightheartedness of a very important topic, but what I'm trying to say here is that I think as a district, it's our responsibility to help guide the conversation, not direct it, not tell people what to think, but help guide people in the conversation. We know already, the public has told us time and time again what some of their main concerns are. Safety and security is a big concern. Renovating bathrooms throughout our district is a big concern. Making sure that we have the newest facilities while maintaining the historical integrity of our building, these are things that our community has already told us. So I think moving forward, what we'd like to ask from the board is that is kind of your sense of where you feel, how you feel about us in our community engagement, helping to direct that conversation, not telling people what to think, but actually directing with some more concrete ideas and plans, and then getting feedback on those specific concrete plans and ideas, and then tweaking them. We did this several years ago, and Trustee Barry and other trustees who were on the board at the time, you may remember, Trustee Petlicoff may also remember, when we did the boundary adjustments, we brought actual boundary plans to the board, and they gave us feedback and said, "That's not going to work. That's a dumb idea. No, let's do it this way." And the board then tweaked those ideas, and we then came up with a plan that was, had consensus across the community. I think that this is a better way of moving forward in our discussions about our facilities and infrastructure. I think it's our responsibility as a school district to help guide those conversations in that way.
Any questions, comments?
Other than if you make me hungry, I don't know.
What does he like, Mexican?
Okay, all right.
I enjoy working with David. As you can see, he can take an issue and form it into a process that makes it very easy to understand. Just so you know, we have not set on our laurels since 2019. We've invested close to $90 million in our buildings from ESAR funds, you know, from our capital project funds, even grants. If you know, we've started the electrical buses were on the road this week for the first time. That was a $7.1 million grant. Buses was on our list. We spent millions of dollars to upgrade our infrastructure for technology. We have new cameras across all our buildings, which we never had before. So we have done what we can, but we're getting to the critical point now where we can't necessarily fund that unless we go out and find a particular grant for it. So I just want to put out there the sense of urgency. We need to address this because we can't continue on this format and be able to operate our schools. We're going to have more issues. If you remember, we've had a big electrical issue at Dearborn High. We had one at Bryant locally. That was during the summer, so school wasn't in session. We want to make sure we start addressing this, so I just want to put the sense of urgency out there that we have to do it. So on the agenda today are two items. We broke it down because the board asked to get a consultant to work with the public. We needed to update our numbers because of the money we put in through the grants of that $90 million and other grants for safety and security. You know, we have also the new sensors in our bathrooms. You know, all that is coming from grant money, vape detectors, except for the vape detectors through general fund. But those are the things we need to start working on. And so today, we broke the consultants down into two sections, one to work on the financial and historical side, and one to work with the public, because not necessarily one company was going to be able to do it all, so they would basically hire somebody underneath them, so we're trying to cut out the middleman and save money by doing that. Now, the numbers today on the agenda are high. We didn't want to change your bid because we asked them, "What will you do for us?" and put a dollar value. Now, they're going to cross over, so they're going to, one says we can do A to Z, the other one says we're only going to do, you know, X, Y, Z. So that's why the numbers are high. We'll sit down with those vendors after today and kind of whittle down to say who will actually do what. So the numbers are high. We don't expect to spend that much money, but we need to make sure their bid was out there, so whoever piece we choose to work with the vendor will be there. So that was it.
I, Trustee Al-Jahmi, go ahead.
So I was a part of the VIP for the last bond, and one of the challenges we had was I felt like the school district was trying to convince us this is the right way versus listening to the community and what's needed. It was kind of more convincing us and giving us guidelines, and this is what needs to be done. So my question is, what would be done differently? And at that time, we did have a third-party vendor, I recall, that was putting the bid or helping us. So what would be done differently with regard to engagement with the community? And how would you look at proposing the bond to the community?
I think the first step is obviously communication. We want everybody to know that though no decision has been made, we're really going to put out there the information, the data we've had. We spent a lot of money on the long-term plan to show the needs at every single building, and the priorities as they see it, based upon their feedback from all the surveys and public opinions and townhouses that they've held, they've given us a lot of data. So now the point is, all right, as David said, we got to help lead the conversation, but not lead them to an answer. Just kind of give them the data so they can see for themselves the need, see where we've been, see what data we have, and really where do we want to go in the future? So I think those are the key points that we really have to make sure is what do they want in their school district? It's their school district. I actually live in the district, but you know, it's our district, and where do we want to go from there?
Sorry, if I could just say, I was just looking more for lessons learned from the failure of the last bond, too.
I would say that, you know, as I mentioned, there are things that we absolutely know that we need, and it is our responsibility to make sure we share that with the public, that as experts who live and breathe this every day, we know exactly some of the things that our schools are in desperate need of and need to be addressed. Secure vestibules at all of our schools, items such as this, safety and security. The balance is then listening to the feedback and incorporating that into the master plan, and then that plan being delivered to you, the board, and then you will have the ultimate decision of saying, "This is the plan that we're going to go forward with, or this doesn't." Keeping in mind that your vision as a board is always going to be a global vision for the whole district. Not everybody always has that global vision, but your responsibility as board members will be to have that global vision, and that's what we will have to, that will be our job to bring that to you, is that plan that incorporates the needs that we know we need, along with those suggestions and those thoughts from our community.
Thank you. Dr. Maleko, do you want to add something?
Just to comment, I think that happened after that. We learned a lot of lessons, and we met right away in the pandemic, but one of the things we heard from the community, I think the board did, was come up with a long-term plan. So we did that. We spent eight to nine months with Fielding, and a lot of that work has been done, and a lot more work was done than what was happening in 19. We put it on pause because of the operational millage renewal in February on, for strategic reasons, and it made sense to everybody at the time, but now we have to go to the next phase of taking the plans and a tremendous amount of data that we have, and then going back to the community and getting additional input, and I think that's the stage we're at, and that's the difference from the 19, one of the major differences.
Thank you.
I have a question, but it may be delayed until we vote on the item, but having only one bidder first was an issue for me to see why was it only one? Did we constrain ourselves with the RFP with the historical aspect?
Yeah, originally, we had one vendor for one of the bids, so we actually extended the bid, reached out to the vendors that some of you provided. Ms. Trustee Petlicoff gave us some vendors for the historical, sent it back out there. The one vendor said they didn't want to bid again, but we had other vendors that stepped up. So we did kind of work the community and reached out to other districts. We reached out to Detroit, who has done a lot of historical preservation, and one of the companies that's on the agenda today was actually working on the old train depot and renovated that depot. So we know that they have some experience in that. That was important for us.
And timetable if this gets approved tonight?
Yeah, we talked to both vendors and made sure they understood that we had two options. One was for this November, and they said they would put a timetable again to meet this November because it's a city election, which means it's primarily for Dearborn that they would be voting on, and the fallback would potentially be next November, and that would be a much broader scale, a state vote. So we don't want to actually, that'll be something that the consultants will work with the community and see which one they feel is more favorable, and work with, you know, board members and the administration and work through that process.
We definitely don't want this to be rushed, so we want this to be a perfect plan for the community, listening to them from the get-go about what they want. So we would like to get more information possibly in the next month, because we need to know as soon as possible, the public also needs to know, if there would be a bond coming forward this year or next year. So I would say we would have to make that decision soon, since there are so many other steps that we have to do prior to putting this on the ballot.
All good? Any other questions? Yep, Trustee Barry?
Not part of this discussion, but you mentioned earlier that we have the buses on the road now. How many electric vehicle buses we have?
We received 18 buses through that grant. All 18 are here. Some of them are still getting the cameras and the, you know, all the other stuff that's necessary to put them into production, but I know they were scheduled for five buses last week, and I'm sure there's more this week.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I've seen one today. My son was picked up with the new one, so that was great.
We are working with Highland for a media event later in February as well, but we want to, as Mr. Wall said, we want to make sure that all the buses are equipped and functioning.
President Mosup.
Trustees Zahar?
Look, I believe very strongly that our community, everyone in the community, wants to support the schools. So I just urge all of us to make sure that we are being very aggressive and transparent with the community when we're communicating with them about these bonds, way before they ever end up on a ballot, because I think if we do that, we will get so much buy-in that our bonds will pass with over, you know, we won't have to be up against campaigns against the bond or anything like that if we really get buy-in. So I just urge everyone to make sure that we're really investing in campaigns to educate and include, I know you guys are doing that, but I just want to make sure that we do it even more aggressively, to invest in campaigns to include and educate the community before it ever ends up on a ballot, because I think if we do that, I believe very strongly, everyone in our community wants to support the schools. They understand how important it is. But I think if everyone feels included, then we won't end up with hoping that a bond passes by 52%. Instead, we'll be not worrying that it's going to pass with 70 or 75%. So I urge us to just be very, very aggressive in inclusion and education, campaigning strong for these bonds before we put them on a ballot.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wall, and thank you, Mr. Mustenin.
All right, I'll move to non-agenda items. Thank you, Mr. President. So Happy New Year, everyone. Hope you had a great New Year. Wishing you all the best. We look forward to 2025, working together. The break is a great time to unwind and spend time with family, but we're back and we're excited to be here. You know, I know the students...
You know, I know the students, we're still emailing, we have had, whenever we've had some weather conditions, but on the weekend are days off. So we have had no cancellations yet. It might disappoint some of the students, but we got to save those days for needed. And eventually, we know the weather is coming. I could see some of the students here kind of grinning and chuckling there, so. But anyway, I wish you all the best to the board, to the community, to the parents, to the students for a great year in 2025. I'm going to move along the agenda, and I have Dr. Patterson and Ms. Farage, who are going to come up and talk about the state accountability system, the index scores that were recently released.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to our newest trustees.
Thank you.
Do we have the presentation? I'll share it with you.
Since they're pulling up technology, is that okay? So I wanted to mention a couple of things under other. We did, we are in the process, and the board approved this, but I was contacted, I was on WJR interview this morning. There's been positive momentum with our vape cessation committee that's been working. I know, I saw Ms. Faye Neemer here, she's been working with Dr. Swiden, Ms. Rumler, and others. And we have students that are on the committee, I think some of them are here. And so we've been working on prevention, but we piloted these vape detectors at Dearborn High. They're very effective. It's worked out well. We're now moving to the other high schools. We've gotten a very positive response. The technology is outstanding, where it can, literally, they get alerts on their phone, and the administration would know immediately. And so again, we know that people, we want to support them. We have access in LHAC when they have addictions. But at the same token, we were hearing from the public, and we were seeing the new technology as much better, and we've seen it really work at Dearborn High. And if it works at the high schools this year, we would probably consider, as long as we can budget for it, for next year, looking at the middle schools. We know nationally, the statistics show 8% of high school students are using vapes and 3% middle school nationally. So those are concerns, and we're going to work together with the community on that. And I'll turn it back to Ms. Farage.
You hear me? Briefly, we're going to talk about the accountability system, because the scores were released to the public in mid-December, I think. And it's important for the community to understand how to access the scores for the individual buildings, and what components the state looks at when they score our buildings with an index score. The historical timeline for the ASA, Accountability System, which in our state, it's called the Index System, as you can see, it started with the ESEA, Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and it's changed with each president. In 2015, we started a new system called ASA, which stands for Every Student Succeeds Act. And with that comes a new accountability system at the state level. With the new system, the buildings were not required to have 100% proficiency rate for each student, as it was with An Old Child Left Behind, if you remember. In 2013, the goal, and the ambitious goal was that every student will be proficient by year 2013. With ASA, it's not like this. The state was more realistic, and so was the federal accountability. We took, or they took what we had in place, and proportionally, they set some threshold percentages, and they based the accountability system on there. We included here the guide, the guide on how to access the individual schools, if you wish to look up your child's school and look at what the component scores are. Hand it to Dr. Patterson.
Yes, and as Ms. Farage mentioned, the school index is the most recent version of the federal and our state's version of the accountability system that started in 2017 is when it was first implemented. So back with No Child Left Behind, it was 100% test scores. The school index is much more of a multiple measures index. And so the way that it works is all of our schools get an index score between 1 and 100 overall, and then they are scored on each of these individual components as well. So they get a rating on student growth, proficiency, school quality, school student success, which you can see listed below, includes chronic absenteeism, post-secondary work, physical education access, also includes graduation rates, English learner progress, test participation in English language, English learner test participation. So each school is rated on each of these from 1 to 100, and then there's some weighting and fractions and percentages that go into creating an overall index of 1 to 100. So the trustees, you all received a memo on this recently that has all of our school scores. All of this is public information through My School Data. The directions are on the last slide, that you can go and look at all of this information in detail. Just a few key takeaways is that overall, since the index system was implemented, we've seen an increase across the board in our schools. Overall, on average, we've increased eight points on the index system since we began measuring this. If you take a look at the family dashboard, it lists our comparison to similar schools as well to the state. You will see that the majority of our schools outperform our peers according to the parent dashboard. And then this is something that we do use as part of our school improvement process. At each of our elementary, middle, and high school meetings, we review these schoolers with our administration, and we use this as part of our SIP plan to improve our practices.
Although our achievement rates are not up where we want them to be, the reason you see our schools comparable to other schools in the district and improving is because the growth component weighs the highest in the accountability system. And for schools that do not meet the threshold, the criteria for performance, they are designated one of these designations. Thankfully, we didn't have any schools that received these designations. In the past, we used to hear about priority schools, focused schools, where the state intervenes to improve student achievement. We haven't had any of the schools with these designations. All of our schools are what is called universal support, no identification for CSI, Comprehensive Support and Improvement, ATS, Additional Targeted Support, or TSI, which is Targeted Support and Improvement. We're open for any questions?
So that is the change from the focused priority to performing?
That's correct. In 2016, since 2016, we've had this specific system in place after ASA was adopted by the federal government.
Trustee Pleschkov?
Okay. This is an annual, so it's once a year. Our school improvement process, don't we do that several times throughout the years? So we're not always, this is a one-time thing that we incorporate in one school improvement. When do we use it then for that?
So this is used ongoing for our school improvement efforts in buildings.
But we only get a measurement once a year, correct?
Every year, we get these measurements once on these five components, based on test scores, participation in testing, graduation rates, and the other components that Dr. Patterson mentioned.
So when do we use it for the school improvement? I've been through the school improvement process in elementary school, and I know we do it more than once.
I think you're talking about the walkthroughs.
When do we apply this as part of the process? In the spring or in the fall or?
So you're talking about when we go to the buildings and walk through, through the buildings? Okay, so these walkthroughs is a different tool that we use internally. It was district-created, and when we do walkthroughs, we go look for implementation in the classrooms, not specifically for these metrics. For these metrics, when the schools come to central office to present what we call data presentations, which took place in December, and the last one was last week.
Last week.
So this is when the schools unpack each component, and they talk about what needs to be improved.
And these numbers, though, are generated from fall measurements?
Most of them, so the testing comes from spring assessment, graduation, yes. And graduate, yeah, so that would be from the spring of 2024. Graduation rates are always one year lagged behind because they're not certified. And then absenteeism is also from the prior year. So these are all 2024.
All right. That's what I was trying to.
Yes, yeah. And when we mentioned that, it's one part of our SIP program. Schools are looking at data continuously throughout the year when it becomes available. So grades become available at the quarters and semesters. This is something that comes available in the fall, so that's when they look at it.
I'm just trying to envision how it gets incorporated in the decision-making at the building level, and how often they are able to use it effectively to change trajectory in the building if they see some trending that would affect their, you know, improvement process for the year. All right, thank you.
Trustee Eljamie?
I do have a question. When I look at the component, student growth is 34%. What does that include when we say, because I know proficiencies are separate? What is student growth?
So student growth is measured in grades four through 11, so fourth through eighth grade, and then we skip until we get to 11th grade. That's our next testing year. And so it's included for math and language arts, and they take a look at how a student improved from one year to the next. So students begin in third grade, they don't have two years of scores until they get into fourth grade, so that's where it begins. And so the way that it's calculated, just overall, is they take a look at where a student began, they took a look at how they grew compared to their peers, and they set a target that would put the student on path to proficiency a few years down the road, and then they measure that student at that target or below that target. If they're above that target, then they're counted as making adequate growth towards where we want them to be. If not, then they don't. And that's kind of the fraction that they use for the student growth component.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Patterson. Thank you, Ms. Farage.
I have one more, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Dr. Malakal.
Thank you. So obviously, everyone was looking forward to the holidays, but unfortunately, the day before the holidays, we had a tragedy at Fortson, as a student was hit by a vehicle. You know, our staff, our thoughts and prayers are with the student and their family. We have been providing support to the family through Ms. Roselle Dubaly and Mr. Farhead at Fortson, you know, as needed. The student is still in critical condition, so obviously, you know, there's a lot of need there, but we'll continue to support. I know that trustees reached out, and some of them even visited myself and others in the hospital, and we're trying to find out and provide support. I know the mayor's here, and I appreciate he called me the very next day and, you know, finding out about the student. I know he reached out to the family as well. And then we were also talking on the second part is, President Mosz, we talked about this last week, about what we can do there. And mayor, you know, we've done traffic studies in this past, and then the mayor said they're going to work on it from there and the Dearborn Police. I know the Dearborn Police have been there since the start of school, and we appreciate that, and Chief Shaheen. It is a state road, and I believe some of the, you know, traffic lights in that may be county or state, so there's a lot of bureaucracy. But we do know that we need to work on it with them, and in the past, we've worked with the county, and appreciate the mayor taking the lead on that with Chief Shaheen. And again, it's a tragedy, our thoughts and prayers, and we're praying for the student. And so hopefully, you'll keep your thoughts and prayers for the student and their family moving through this very difficult situation.
And as an update from the city, the person who was driving the vehicle and caused the terrible car accident has been charged and is going through the legal process. Our thoughts definitely with the family of the student, and unfortunately, her sister witnessed the accident as well. And this begs a lot of questions to all of us about driving and distracted driving, and the importance of coming together as a school district, as well as the city, of how do we improve safety and we ensure student safety crossing, and everyone crossing to schools and to other venues. It's definitely a bigger conversation, but I do want to make sure that we focus on safety moving forward, even having it as a standalone agenda item, where we discuss issues regarding student safety, what we can do to improve that. That area on Ford Road is very dangerous. It's something that we've discussed with the mayor and definitely has to be addressed. And not only that area, there are also other areas in our city which are dangerous to cross, and we have to find ways where pedestrians can safely cross. I have trustee Barry and then trustee Pleschkov.
Just a quick follow-up on Dr. Malakal's comments. Yes, a lot of my colleagues and I have visited the family in the hospital. President Mosz and I went together one day. I've been checking on the family a couple of times. I really appreciate everything the school district and the city is doing, and Mayor Hamud did visit the family. They were very appreciative. A lot of our leaders have been checking on the family. This is what Dearborn is all about, so. But as if 2:00 this afternoon, our young princess still needs a lot of prayers, all I can say.
Thank you, trustee Barry. Trustee Pleschkov?
Yeah, for years, we've been struggling with traffic safety. It's been an ongoing conversation we've had throughout the city with every neighborhood. We've tried to implement a variety of options. The mayor, I saw his one-minute message about tinted windows even and the low visibility that they create, and that that could possibly lead to some traffic fatalities or altercations over the years. We also have to continue to support, and I know that we started trying to encourage driver ed again through programs through the school district again, to try to get our students better educated about how to drive safely. But we can't stop the amount of individuals who just care to disregard the rules of the road. And I would hope that, I don't want this to be a wake-up call, but I would hope that the schools can, once again, especially schools like Fortson and Dearborn High, where there is a lot of pedestrian traffic versus auto in those areas as students come and go from the schools, that we can bring more visibility to the concerns, whatever we can find. I know we have had conversation after conversation about pedestrian crosswalks over the roads, but as Superintendent Malakal mentioned, there's a lot of bureaucracy involved in that, and having to deal with national roads along with who pays for what. So I hope that we continue to band together and put our heads in the right places to encourage families to have the conversation with their younger drivers about responsibility, and that a car is not for a joyride. A car needs to be handled no differently than any other piece of dangerous equipment.
Absolutely. I would say car is a weapon as well. Trustee Watts?
To piggyback off of what trustee Pleschkov had said, you know, as a parent of a child who's turned 16, it is terrifying to relinquish that control for that child. But at a very early age, I always taught my children that when you are walking, make sure you make eye contact with that car. Just because there's a stop sign, do not assume that car will stop. So it's an ongoing conversation from when they were small, right? We teach our children how to cross the street, and I think it needs to be a continued conversation. Even when he was taking driver's ed, it was, he was noticing how many cars would ignore the red light. So it's the defense of driving, but I think it is sadly a conversation that we have to have with our children, is that don't assume that the other person is going to do the right thing. So parents, it's a lot of scary things out there, but I think it's constant conversations, check-ins with them. As a 16-year-old, I check his speed on Life 360, sorry teenagers out there, but it is still a conversation of how fast are you going. it is still a conversation of how fast are you going? It's more than, like you said, it is a weapon, not only for yourself, right, behind the wheel, but how are you affecting those others around you?
Trustee Eljamie?
I agree with everything that everyone has said, and I do appreciate the district and the city, Mayor Hamud, working together. But I want to recognize one individual that's along with Ms. Eldubaly and Mr. Farhat, Mr. Maddox Safe, was a social worker from Etzel Ford. He's been really engaged with the family, working with them, giving them support, and he's doing a great job. So I just want to recognize him as well.
Yeah, he's been, right from the start, that Friday, with them all the time. So thank you for doing that.
Sure. All right. Thank you.